Members to, members to here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like for members of the public, I do need to point out that this is not a public meeting, it's a council meeting, it's probably a council meeting but in public, right? So there isn't a topic, questions, you're here and probably in the centre of the cinema, so that's the view of who is meeting, we're doing that. I'm very unfortunate, I can't accept questions from the public. Our next council, full council, is on the 3rd of February at Garfield Church Hall, and you're very welcome to come there and to ask questions there, but this is a particular sort of extraordinary agenda meeting. Our next council meeting. Apologies to receive apologies to our absence?
No.
No? Declaration of interests, to sign any declarations which are purely non-proprietary person interests relating to items on the agenda? And request for this translation? No? The first item on the agenda, I'll read them out so that you can actually see, is, no, it's, to receive a report for the interim clerk explaining the impact to the council of the loss of the power of competence, as we have got a local clerk here, very experienced, Val Taylor, our last chair of Val, her full knowledge to be able to answer that question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Due to the fact that the Rye Town Council no longer has a clerk, to hold the general power of competence, you have to have an elected council, you have to have a resolution of the council, you also have to have a qualified clerk holding the silver qualification with the module relating to general power of competence. So, any project that you have got going at the moment under the general power of competence will continue for the life of this council. But you cannot use the general power of competence until you get a plaque in that holds the silver qualification to use it on a new project. So therefore you have to go back to the lovely Charles-on-the-M baker and see what law you can use, truss, et cetera, to ensure that you can naturally deliver a project that new project you want to provide in the interim period. But just so you know that things still exist likely for any new project. The older projects which have been run under the general power of competence will continue to look into the rest of this council or the project is finished, certainly.
In the form of, you see, that Gareth Hughes' responsible finance officer will in fact be the interim clerk to, on the basis of this, so we thank Gareth for that, that has proved, and we will be bringing the services, all the services of Val Taylor to actually help us with her full knowledge to make sure that we are to the public. Thank you. We now go on to motion, on the agenda, it's a notice of motion, one, twenty, to consider a vote of no confidence in Mayor, councillor Lily and Deputy Mayor, councillor Axworth. Motion presented by the constituents that he has put in an amendment to his motion. Please do you put the amendment forward?
I love that. It doesn't overlook the gravity and the weight of things that have been undertaken, and I think that that's one thing that we need to get, to make sure that we've done things correctly, and I know the sense of purpose was there, but let's make sure that technically and legally, through the financial institutions, that we're not open to challenging the future. That's part of the parcel of my original motion, where I do hold people to account as they hold you to account. And we expect things to come from our charitable organisations in and around Rye, in the proper format, with undertaking the guidance we should undertake and, if you like, concur with that when we move out and do various disciplines within the council. My original motion was, as councillor Lily has said, suggesting that councillor Lily and Axworth required to stand down immediately if we could find that there was an incorrect avenue that went down. I'm not saying that was on purpose, but I'm actually saying that when we're dealing with public funds, and this is what it is, we have to make sure that we're dealing correctly with it, and it's there, it's rock solid with everything about it. So, I don't think there was transparency, and I don't think, I think we've lacked transparency for a long time in Rye Town Council, we need to amend that. So my motion, which is amended, was taken from Rye Town Council's standing orders, and it's basically an amendment which I want to withdraw completely, and it's to take out the former motion, and I wish to withdraw my motion if my amendment is accepted. It's to resolve that this council agrees to the following. That we, it can best be achieved by requesting advice from NAL, that's the National Associate of the local councils, legal services, and/or other legal entities, and indeed the internal auditor, to undertake an urgent inspection of the recent processes employed by personnel panel to report to full council at the earliest possible moment, and I think, or occasion, and I think that's something that I wanted to try and bring forward, and it's not this me, I'll take the flag, not this me, but I, as I say, as far as I'm concerned, this is public money, we, as elected members, are culpable, we are responsible for that, and Rye Town Council as a whole makes the decisions, it's not down to one person, it's not down to two or three people, it's not within the remit of the informant panel to, the personnel panel thankfully, to make these decisions, it's for the whole council, it should be brought back to the whole council. So there's a need, there's a need to provide scrutiny now, but in the other tier of authorities, we have IOI council, national bodies, there's a side of scrutiny, there certainly isn't within Rye Town Council, we need to sharpen up on that, we need to get better at it, we need to make sure that we're open, honest and transparent, we, we've got a lot, hopefully a lot of projects coming up in the future, some of them quite costly, if we don't get it right this time, then you've got to make sure that we get it right the next time and the time after that, because if we don't, then we might well be pulled in, and it might be a downtime more costly than ever will, we can think of, and it will be. So, that's a part of the elements, but we are a court, as I said, we are a corporate body, decisions are made by this corporate body, public money, your precept, that's what goes into Rye Town Council, that's the only money that we get in, that's the only money that we get in unless we can go for grant funding, and that's, and that's the basis of, what we get in is what we can deal with and what we can hand out to local charities and support people. It's very important that we look after that money, it's very important that we support our people in Rye, so we can't afford to frisk away, we can't afford to actually turn around and say to people that we can do this and we can sort out something, get it out the way, and it's, it's cost us, perhaps hate me, well it may cost us anything, or let's face it, it might cost us a downtime more on our next project, so we want to make sure that from the word goes, we get it right. So, we have due process, we have our standing orders, our standing orders as people with businesses have got their own business plan and the way they operate, charities have got theirs as well, we've got ours. That's the way, that's the way we can operate and we will operate, and as I say, if there's a shadow of doubt in my mind, and this is not because I think I know the best, but if there's a shadow of doubt in my mind, don't you think, and say, hold on a minute, as we don't, right? And, you know, if it means me putting a name to it, I'll put a name to it, as soon as I've put my name to this, I'm not afraid to get a kicking.
Councillor Stevens, can you?
I'm not afraid to get a kicking, and I'm certainly sure that the mayor is not afraid to get a kicking, let's try and get, let's try and get the show on the road for Rye and Rye Town Council and all those that depend on us, and make sure that we use the money wisely, but make sure that it's within our legal framework and our standing orders. Thank you.
Councillor Stevens, just to make sure, your new paper, your approach and your new paper is, is your position, surely?
Absolutely.
So, how many votes have you seen?
I'm looking round the room.
Shall I lead the council?
Yeah.
I'll lead it out as chair. To resolve that the council agree the following, this can be best achieved by requesting advice from NAL, Legal and any other legal entities, and the internal auditor to undertake an urgent inspection of recent processes employed by personnel panel to report to full council at the earliest possible moment. Can I clarify that by putting this forward, you have withdrawn the motion of no confidence?
If this amendment is successful?
Absolutely. I think it's clarified, because it can't be an amendment, so you've got to drop the amendment, because it's a completely different motion. You've got a motion, very clearly in the sense here, that this council no longer has confidence in the current councillor, Mayor, councillor Lily, and Deputy Mayor, councillor Axworth, and that may be required to stand down immediately from the expected offices to allow a fresh election for these posts to be carried out in the next meeting of the full council. So personally, we're aware of motion, because of the lack of transparency included in respect from being shown to common councils and so on, there is a need for this council to bring about change that can restore public competence and sound administration. This can only be achieved from, by the removal from office of the councillors responsible for the current disarming. So it's completely different. I, I totally agree with you that we do need, and actually it has been, we do need to look at our processes, and we do need, we've set up, from the last meeting, please, hear me out, to set up a standing order review committee by panel, which is chaired by councillor Tevel, which has already started its work to look at all our processes, and we can, absolutely, we should be going to law, and we should be going to legal, and looking at our financial regulations, and yes, we should be talking to the internal audit, we already have that process in file.
Not where I've been, those people, haven't heard of the IOI, the IOI in Rye Town Council?
Well, the point is that it only starts in December, and we have to actually save the exceptional circumstances of the fact of the Christmas Eve. I think the council should be given a little bit more time, right, to be able to have a place. Councillor Tevel, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'm a retired head teacher, I'm not Scott Christ Waterhouse, et cetera, who can conduct massive things. I've given some time, I've already started to look through the standing order, so that I will be able to at least come to talk to people, but it's not my sole job, it's the sole, it's the job of the whole council, all I can do is point out and say, you need to look at this, and then you all need to work on it, you know, I'm afraid, not unless you're expecting to pay me about thirty thousand pounds to do it, but everybody else needs to work on it.
And we have a actual committee that is established to support the general, point of information. Chair, the review panel is met once in its existence, since we've set up that panel in December the second, it's met once, Chair. So, basically, I, this isn't, can I accept this as a, as a, an amendment?
Right, or my, my initial motion stands then, that this council no longer has competence as a mayor.
I would like to clarify in the point that your, and I have no problem with not restoring your motion, the, I do wish for members to know that it's very, very clear, and it was very clear from the personnel panel, that we did need to look at the ambiguities in our, although I stand by that the recent personnel panel has actually done things in the correct way, that might be disputed, but I'm happy for people to have any kind of scrutiny, I'm vice chair of scrutiny for IOI council, so I do believe in scrutiny regarding this, and I think it's very important to bring this back to a full council and to the public, because we do need to actually see that we are doing everything properly within this. So I, I support it, but it doesn't fit with it. So do we have a second, councillor? Councillor Stevens?
Thank you. I know your role in scrutiny, and I think members of the public, which you, you what got, I think you said, that we as councillors, all of us carry a responsibility to scrutinise the actions of our council, to ensure that the public do get best determines of their investment in this council. There have been serious questions raised about the legitimacy of some of the actions undertaken recently by the personnel panel, which is headed by councillor Lily. Those are matters which are disputed amongst councillors, there are at least seven councillors who believe that there are serious matters of concern that remain unresolved, the remaining councillors this evening voted to support the confidential report, that by definition may support the activities of the personnel panel. So we have a standoff, with nearly, nearly fifty percent of the council having one view, and the slight majority on the other hand, probably a very different view, and it's very difficult to see how a council that is so entrenched can resolve a working, a satisfactory, working way forward. The thought that occurred to us, as we considered this dilemma, the way we can move around so that we can work together and be quite cheerful about the processes that we employ, was to the amendment that Ian was trying to put forward, which was to say that we now need, as our next step, as our way forward, to invite NAL legal services to give us advice, we now also need to get in touch with the internal auditor and invite that person in, that organisation, that person in, to review the activities that have been questioned by the seven of us, and if they find that those activities have been perfectly in order and legitimate, then that resolves the matter, we all have to stand by the ruling that will be given by the independent auditor. As it stands, we, and that is the advice of the monitoring officer that we went to see earlier this week in County Hall, the way to break this standoff is to seek that independent advice from a person who is competent and qualified to comment upon the practices that we employ. So even though this motion in itself may fall tonight, I do urge colleagues to give serious consideration, to get in touch with the internal auditor and with NAL, to seek their advice and to seek an investigation by the internal auditor so that we can have a report that clarifies and clears this dilemma.
Councillor Wakeley, can I say, I don't disagree with anything you say, what I have to do is actually officiate through this meeting, that amendment to the motion doesn't relate, I am happy if you want a, to have a, to actually have a resolution on that, I think, I don't have a problem with that issue, but it's different from the motion, and I think we have to call to the motion. I also want to correct you that nine, we recently had a vote regarding the personnel panel, we can offer confidential access to go into that, nine of, nine councillors here voted for it, five voted against and one have said, this is democracy, right, and democracy clearly works. So actually, I agree. The members who have a lot of experience in different things, a cabinet member, members of the council, a chair of scrutiny, looked at this, and this was properly done, democracy has clearly said, nine against five with one of sanction. I would say, go on to the motion, though you have spoken. And so councillor Axworth.
Well, it's all a bit of an anticlimax, coming here for a vote of no confidence, and then we have a bit of mumbo jumbo.
Now we're getting some from you.
I would like to say that I'm a hundred percent behind Big Mayor, I think he's in the six months or so that he's been the mayor, we've had a major city change in the operation of Rye Town. The process of upgrading the high street, as you know, is based on efforts to take over Rye Harbour, which is very popular and absolute population, he's trying to save the town hall, and he's instigated, we've had a place plan provided, and he's trying to save active town, and I believe that he's done a real, and I've had so many, so much, such a long time, nothing happened in Rye. So I say to you, he's the excellent mayor, there are a lot of people here this evening, do you think he's a good mayor?
Yeah!
Stop, I'm in charge here, I'm your man. I saw you, Adrian, you were withdrawing your last top comment.
Okay, not what you were going to do.
Okay, not that. Sure. And can we, can we have a proposer and seconder for the motion of no confidence in myself and councillor Axworth? Proposer?
I would speak with the second person. The reason I'm supporting this in its original form now is because the mayor has given a very clear indication that he is unwilling to allow the internal auditor to come in.
No, he did not, he did not.
And he's going to allow, as he's very cheerful from what has been said, and in consequence, once again, I find that because of that, we have no future. This is a motion which is to, as I mentioned, the removal of the mayor's secretary.
Okay, are we going to use the vote, is it the vote?
Move the vote.
We're going to the council.
Oh, summer, huh?
Would you like to sum up?
Thank you very much. I would like to sum up. I'd like to say that the odd branch was offered to you, but you touched it away.
Oh, you were off.
Where I tried my best in five minutes coming in here to put forward, if you're on pain, then.
Councillor gentleman, being gentle as you are.
And this is the antics that we get, turning up the pot in Rye Town Council, and this is what actually causes the breach. It's not about, it's not about personal vendettas or anything, no. Anyway, I offered, I offered you the opportunity for you to take it forward, where I wasn't going to propose that you were pushed to one side and brought, and brought down by having anyone else focus, this is great, we're going to support her, and you get a room full of frauds. What I was, what I was going to do was actually so, this has got, this has got the show on the road as far as scrutinising the decision of the personnel panel, and indeed making sure that the money spent by Rye Town Council is spent in the correct manner, under standing orders as they stand on the moment, and we need to make sure that that was followed. Now, I try, in this sort of environment, sometimes respect goes down the window, and I don't know why, I don't know why.
Councillor Stevens, can you, can you please wrap this up? Please, can you bring it together? Okay, look, you have agreed, you, and will I take it, your, rest of your group will agree? I mean, you're on match, can I say, no, can I say, if you're on match, both of you had a row, will they want to, and say, yes, we will, we will ask for this, we will ask for NAL to come in, and we will, and we will take it forward, and then, and then, if you are, if you've trans, if you have trans, if you've transgressed with that, if that power has found a slightly down a ride, will you resign?
No.
No.
I'm going straight to the vote. Those in favour, a name vote, yeah? And look, I'm sure we don't have a responsibility on this, okay, name, a name vote, those in, in favour of the motion of no confidence in myself, and we have councillor Stevens, councillor Moody, councillor Wakeley, councillor Lyons, councillor Adams and councillor Cretchley, those against the motion. Councillor Tevel, councillor Whistle, councillor Charles Stratton, councillor Ross, councillor Conyers, myself, councillor Lily, councillor Jordan, councillor Axworth and councillor Farrell. And extensions. And extensions.
All of them.
One extension. The current decision. There are six.
Right, councillor, it's a matter of is six votes for the motion, nine votes against the motion, one vote for the extension. So the motion is defeated.
We have a, uh. I would like to make statements at this point that I have known as mayor, I will be and will take on board what you said.
Thank you.
Knowing that actually the majority of councillors have confidence in me.
Fantastic.
Thank you. The motion is proposed by councillor Doolie Crichtley. The proposal that this council no longer has the confidence in the current chair of planning, councillor Jordan, and deputy chair of finance, councillor Farrell, and that they may be required to stand down immediately from their respective offices for our fresh election to these posts to be carried out at the next meeting of the. Lack of, because of the lack of transparency and inclusion respect being shown to the councillors as well, there is a need for this council to bring about change to public confidence and sound administration. This can only be achieved by the removal from office of the council for the current dissonance. Councillor Crichtley, do you wish to speak?
Yes. We order the draw of the motion for the original amendment that the council has. Absolutely. For an ordinary session accepted and then all the motions.
Councillor, that was not correct. That, it wasn't, it came forward and linked to the first motion. It didn't come to the other motion.
No, no, that's true, but what I'm saying is, if that motion had, if that amendment had been accepted, then this motion would have been withdrawn. It wasn't accepted.
And the council, I.
Actually, unfortunately, it's not an amendment, it was a new motion. And we can only discuss motions that are agenda items. And unfortunately, as much as everybody would have liked to have accepted it, I think that could be, you know, not free judging how you all vote on it. Unfortunately, the rules are such that you, such that you, I'm afraid it is not a gender item. So therefore, I'm afraid it's got to be a gender.
Okay, um, there are, there are two issues before us here today. The first is the question, why do you no longer have clerks? And circumstances have caused them to be cancelled.
Sorry, sorry, you cannot.
Right, I'm not going to talk about the members.
You just mentioned stop, you cannot understand. Before they say anything regarding any employees.
Fine, um, I'm informed that because six councillors from the personnel power took it upon themselves to sign a non-disclosure agreement.
You cannot discuss this.
I can discuss the fact that it's not disclosure agreement.
No, you cannot.
Is it a non-disclosure agreement?
You cannot, that, you are breaking standing order 54A about confidentiality that all employees, please, are expected to. So I will stop you there, if you're going to discuss it anywhere about that, I will stop you. We have to keep confidentiality because we have to respect people's rights.
Thank you. It would quite nice to respect people's precepts. The taxpayers we each represent are not allowed to know how that money has been spent, what it's been spent on and what it's been spent in that way. Second issue is why a minority group of councillors, just six from sixteen, took it upon themselves to agree a large expenditure in direct contravention of our standing orders while keeping the rest of the councillors in the dark. The first issue is the one which troubles.
Can I stop you there?
I'm not talking about the clerks, I haven't mentioned the clerks. The first issue is the one which most troubles Rye residents, I started to say. But despite the fact I am a councillor, so I ward residents for their precept, I cannot talk about how those six other councillors chose to use it. I cannot refer to the amount which was spent without the knowledge of the full council. Earlier this evening, I was placed in the farcical position of witnessing some of my fellow councillors vote to approve a recommendation of a large expenditure which had already been signed witness.
Can we stop you there?
When ten to sixteen of us didn't know how we would be.
Councillor Crichtley, unless you want legal action to be taken against Rye Town Council, can I invite you as your acting clerk tonight, no sons, no employment, no discussion of the agreements, et cetera, et cetera, must be made or implied to. Otherwise you will find that I will have unison on our neck, on your neck, and you will have probably additional legal action which will cost this council a lot of money. So please would you take my advice as acting clerk?
I would point out this stage because I haven't seen any agreements and I don't know how much money is being spent. I can't actually reveal anything because I don't know.
Can I point out briefly that when we had an actual meeting earlier and a majority of, a majority of councillors.
Are we actually going to speak or are you just going to try and speak?
I'm, I'm saying you cannot talk about this issue.
Fine, so.
Talk to the gender items.
Being, being unable, being.
This motion. Being unable to talk about the details of what has been joining the public money, I will turn to the issue of due process. This can seem much more boring, but for the future of this council, with its proposals and plans to become more heavily involved in large budget activities, the issue of governance is vital. Our rules exist for a purpose. They exist to protect the public from having their money misused and they exist to protect councillors from liability decisions that are typically taken. In this case, our rules are extremely clear. Section 27 of standing orders says, "Any matter which will substantially exceed the amount budgeted for it will be suspended until a full discussion has taken place." There was no budget for any expenditure which has recently been agreed to which I cannot refer without the knowledge or the authority of this council. The rules are quite clear, no decision should have been made until after a full discussion took place in the full council. Councillors may have wished to approach any issue in different ways. Councillors may have argued that what was being proposed was not value for money for the taxpayers of Rye. None of that happened because some councillors chose to ignore standing order 27, this clear rule, and to keep the other 10 of us in the dark to take it upon themselves to agree, for reasons which I cannot refer to, a large unbudgeted item expenditure. This is not, in my view, acting reasonably. This also occurred with a surge in haste. The formal beginning of a process which I cannot refer took place on the 9th of December. Less than a month later, with Christmas in the middle of that period, the process concluded on 3rd January.
Can I stop you there?
At no point.
Councillor Crichtley, I am sorry.
At no point would a majority of councillors have informed this.
This member can no longer be heard, I have a wrong.
Yeah, I figured it might get to him, right? If our rules are, and this is an entirely general point, if our rules are.
I have made a wrong, I am sorry councillor Crichtley, I have made a wrong.
Then the correct.
Oh, shut up. Shut up.
Can we put it to a vote? You are trying to stop people from that.
No, they're not.
I have actually got a proposer and seconder to move to the vote. Those in favour, move to the vote. So, did you have a hand up councillor? I'd love to move to vote. Those in favour of the motion regarding councillor Jordan and. No, it's against the vote. Sorry, I apologise. Those in favour of the motion. No, I didn't take those against going to the vote.
You don't really take it, now, just enjoy it.
That this council has no longer had confidence in current chair of the finance, councillor Jordan and deputy chair finance councillor, and that they are required to stand down immediately from their respective offices for our fresh election to these posts to be carried out at the next meeting of the finance committee. Those in favour of the vote, name vote. Those, those in favour of the motion. We have councillor Stevens, councillor Moody, councillor Wakeley, councillor Lyons, councillor Adams, councillor Crichtley. Uh, those against. Councillor Till, councillor Whittle, councillor Chapman, councillor Ross, councillor Conyers, councillor Linn. Conyers, councillor Linn. Uh, councillor Jordan, councillor Axford and councillor Farrell. Uh, extensions, councillor.
Six for the motion, chairman nine against the motion, one extension, the motion for.
The council is the final, uh, motion from councillor Sue Lyons. This councillor no, no longer has confidence in the current chair of planning, councillor Conyers, and the chief requires to stand down immediately from her office for our fresh election to take place at the next meeting of the planning committee. Proposal by way of motion, lack of, because of the lack of transparency, inclusion and respect being shown to the quality of councillors and staff, there is a need for this council to bring about change that can restore public confidence and sound administration. But this can only be achieved by the removal from office of the councillors responsible for the current dissonance. Councillor, uh, councillor Lyons, do you wish to speak to the motion? Does have to be the election to councillor Conyers.
I think this is always a problem when you speak further on a similar issue, that a lot of what you're going to say has already been said, and I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. All councils have to operate in a legal manner. The rules or standing orders laid down to attack the rate payers from having their money misused and the councillors who are facing personal liability if decisions are made wrongly. In the case of the Rye White Council, there's a scrutiny panel to which decisions can be referred for education and diagnosis, as been mentioned before. There is no such panel for Rye Town Council. So each individual council must address the matter if they believe the decision has been made, uh, sorry, contrary to our standing orders. The decision made by the personnel panel appears to be contrary to our standing orders.
I've already, I'm councillor Lyons, so we cannot discuss. And also, there has been a clear meeting with a vote of nine against five that's actually agreed or agreed with a decision of a subcommittee, a legal subcommittee of this council. That has already been decided and resolved, right? You are speaking against my colleague councillor Conyers and have put him her reputation on the line in this, a fellow Labour Party member.
Hang on.
That might be difficult.
This is the best, I object to politics, I am Labour, Conservative, whatever you want to call it. I've been born into Rye Town, Rye Town council Labour. I sit amongst these people, I don't know what colour, black, white, yellow, green or blue. I am deep in it, I'm in a pimpertize shopkeeper, I've been there a lot of years and I'm proud of what I know. So go to bring politics into this, these three guys are bloody smashing people. They are so gross, they are good human beings. Some people are good and they live the.
Councillor Lyons, I'm sorry. Uh, I found this very, very difficult for me, for the situation and I apologise to you.
This is an apology accepted. I don't know quite where you're drawing the line, but the point I wanted to make was that a personnel panel is not empowered to make decisions. It can only make recommendations which are discriminatory.
Hold on, but your point of information, that the terms of reference, chair, do not say that. We can, I've heard this three times tonight, uh, at a meeting before and a meeting after. The terms of reference, they're here councillor Lyons, you've seen them, there is no reference in that that says the personnel does not have the power.
Point of information, would you say point of information because that's obviously what I'm trying to do. The terms of reference in the personnel panel allow it three areas of scope. The first area is grievance. The second area is direction to existing staff. And the third area is disciplinary. None of those things involve it having the right to make large financial decisions.
I would now stop you there, you can then move into, uh, an area of confidentiality, I will not.
Yes, there is an answer that can be given.
The terms of reference can't be called in and out of the sets. You had your motion, this is councillor Lyons' motion. This is, this is not about, this is about councillor, councillor Conyers being chair of planning. That is what the issue is. It's about the members.
And I believe councillor Conyers went on legal training in the summer of 2019, I think it was September. This was IBOG training.
Can I correct you, your motion does not mention that councillor Conyers is a member of the planning. Your motion of personnel. Sorry, Paul, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that it doesn't refer to her as a member of personnel planning.
If I could respond to that, then by being a, by being chair of planning, by default she is a member of the personnel. So it's by virtue of that role that she is being charged.
I, 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 would you, would you accept the amendment and include me if we're down the country? As I have as vice-chair of planning.
Good man.
So. Yeah, so. Oh, no. Keep talking with it.
Now, could I ask, could I? Let's see, could I?
I don't think councillor Lyons finished yet.
So you want to move to the.
I'm just asking.
Could be noted, but. Okay, because I think the proposal to lose. You can't do that while she's moving the motion, you've got to wait till she's finished.
She's actually still moving.
Who is this guy?
Our person.
Right, I'll go back to what I was saying, that there was little training, um, I have a copy of that which says, a working party panel cannot make a decision which will bind the council and should be advised with or deliberately told, third party should be made aware of any limitations on the council of the working party, as they may otherwise consider their team of the council, and that is the point that I was mentioning.
Can I just.
And I would then say that these recommendations must come back to the full council, so that all council members can look at them. I'm going to miss out the next bit, although I will mention that there were an awful lot of councillors that had no notice of any meetings. This is potentially wrong, because there must be standards, we must seem to be obeying the law, outstanding orders, we're dealing with public money. We are, as a councillor, uh, sorry, as a councillor, accountable for our actions, and because of this issue, I and the six other councillors have taken advice from the monetary officer who recommended an audit of the investigation. I want transparency, I'm not being on the council for long, I would like to work together, cooperatively. I, I love rights, um, I, I, I find it really, really hurtful when people say, oh, you're, you're a Labour member, you don't want to do this. I think I've been interrupted so many times, I will finish what I'm going to say. I couldn't be a councillor while I worked because I was a schoolteacher, you're not allowed to do it. This, for me, was in my retirement, giving something back. Yes, it's not the most joyous experience, attending finance meetings, or council meetings, although this one's quite interesting. But I do want to work within the law. I think if you look at the papers today, you will see that there was an article about where a council, and I won't make the difference, it caused an awful lot of consternation, and I think it's probably an awful lot of pain. My objection, we're not about people, but about the process, and I want us to follow the correct procedures and work together. And I'm really pleased to hear that the men, even that opposed, to getting further advice and working on this, if that had been accepted, I'm too.
Drop my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm now going to, to, sorry, sorry, do I have a second? Uh, anyway.
Mr Mayor, if I have no friend better against you, I do, I have failed the ward councillor, I have supported you as mayor. Unfortunately, when this whole business came up, and I got the email on the sixth of January, I was very, very disappointed, the fact that I had no contact had been made, possibly between you, my, myself and you over. I saw you on the car service three days before, and unfortunately, you didn't mention it to me that this was going on, and it's very, very sad. Please, in future, can we as a council, council get together? When this, this kick-off in the beginning of December, it, it should have, we should have had a council reason to get together, so we could all, of course, argue about the whole thing that was going on. And when we got that email, I went for this, I had my, I had two grandkids with me, and it ruined my family, unfortunately I had to help them, so that's why I am with these five other, uh, six other people, and others described me as that labour mob, but they're not, they're friends of mine, I have a drink with them, I have a friendly friend, but please, let's not act in care, as long as it's in the city, by the way. But please, shall we get our.
Oh, someone triggered the vibe.
Otherwise, I would not be here tonight.
I have the, uh, proposal and seconded for the motion, I also had, um, councillor Ternell moving it to the vote, and seconded by councillor, so can we have the, uh, vote first of moving it to the vote? And those in favour of moving to vote?
What's wrong?
This is the vote. We're all the same.
We both agree, we're all the same, we're both, and those.
Name vote.
And go name votes. Those in favour of councillor Lyons. No, those not in favour of going to the vote. I'm sorry, can you stop her?
Who is that man?
It's Stig from Bembridge. Please, can you stop?
It's Stig.
That's what it's all about, my.
So the one who causes trouble in Bembridge.
Those in favour of the motion. Councillor Ross, motion.
Stig. Oh no.
Sorry, can you put your hands up again, so the Clarks. All the way. Okay, there it is, against councillor Ternell, councillor Whittle, councillor Chapman, councillor Ross, councillor Conyers, councillor Lee. Councillor Conyers. Councillor Jordan. Councillor Axford, councillor Farrell. Uh, extension. Councillor Lucy Young. Can you write?
Say it together.
Six for the motion, nine against the motion and one for the passage.
You can resign now. Yeah, it's time to go, you're right. So what the others go?
I am.
So do the others resign?
I now declare the meeting to an end. Councillor, at this point, I think it is important that members of the public know that during this time, there have been people who have been harassed through emails and through telephone. No, councillor Ternell, I think if anybody thought it, she would go to the monetary model, I think you have a line. Call me if you're fine. Meeting is closed, thank you for coming, and I hope you have a rest and a good night all, each.
And the last comment was, Crichtley should resign.